All right, with that, I'd like to call a meeting of Department of Plan Board to order tonight. A plan board meeting for November second, twenty twenty-two. Start by doing the pledgeable.
United States, America, and to their following four states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. See, general information tonight, emergency exits are right there and where you came in. So in the line of emergency, those are the places to exit to. Uh, as such, you please silence all cell phones and smartwatches, any, anything that makes noise here. Um, and the agendas were when you first came in as, as well as the sign-in sheet. And if not signed in, please make sure so that you do, so that we have you on the record of being here tonight and also to help John out for the minutes for tonight. Um, tonight, we've got, uh, the, the board here is Aaron Sweeney, Adrian Bellis, Tim DeLucia, myself, Doug Beetz, who's also calling in for Ed, Ed's excuse tonight. Usually the chairman, so I'm just filling in for Ed tonight. Uh, we've got John Robitell, the board board, Director of Development, Ron Brand, and see, Augie going in for Dan, so no town engineer or any of the normal attendance. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the rules of procedure adopted by this board on February second this year. Uh, next item up here is the approval amendments from October fifth meeting. Um, any corrections or additions? Um, okay, I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron.
Um, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 One abstention. Wasn't here.
Um, no public hearings tonight, so we don't have any really new business to discuss there. Um, any of the draft resolutions have been previously posted on Tom's website, so I think tonight there's only this incentive zone recommendation, I believe.
Right.
So with that, that comes to our next item up here is which is other board actions. Um, ours, property incentive zoning concept plan. Someone here. There's give us a little info on this.
Can I see that?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ryan Destro from BME Associates. Here with me tonight, representing the applicant, Inandigwa Development Company LLC, is Rob Brenner and Brian Mahoney. Um, to start off, we would like to thank town staff for all the coordination efforts um, that have gotten us to this point where we're now able to introduce the proposed incentive rezoning for the power property Route ninety-six project. Uh, this project consists of rezoning a total of approximately one hundred and forty-five point eight acres and two tax parcels located along the north side of New York State Route ninety-six. Um, one from a limited industrial LA district along the southern portion of the property. And then a residential RS twenty-five district along the northern portion of the property. These parcels are proposed to be rezoned to incentive zoning. Uh, one to allow residential incentive zoning district on approximately one hundred and sixteen point seven acres, which will include a proposed two hundred and sixteen lot um, for sale, single-family residential subdivision with the density of one point eight lots per acre and a minimum lot size of approximately eleven thousand nine hundred square feet. The second area to be rezoned will be the southern portion of the property, which is approximately twenty-nine point one acres. Um, that will be rezoned to an LIGV incentive zoning district. Um, that will be reserved for future general business and LA uses along the New York State Route ninety-six corridor, and that was per the recommendations of the town supervisor. Um, our letter accompanying this application does indicate how this incentive zoning is consistent with the Town of Farmington Comprehensive Plan recommendations for this property. Uh, the letter also includes a breakdown of the incentives being requested by the applicant as well as the amenities proposed to benefit the Town of Farmington in return for the incentives requested. We are also in receipt of a letter from the town supervisor on behalf of the town board. Uh, this is dated August twelfth, twenty twenty-two, which states that the town board is willing to consider the amenities proposed for this project. Finally, we have reviewed and received the planning board's draft report and recommendations to the town board um, and provided our input yesterday for this board's consideration. But once again, we do appreciate your feedback tonight as we move forward with this incentive zoning project. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Um, yeah, I mean, but before, before us tonight, I mean, just so everyone understands what we're doing tonight, tonight is just really, there's a report and recommendation um, that that has been prepared that we are reviewing as the planning board here.
I, I just, my, my backyard is like every spring is runoff. And I think this applies to all of my backyard.
Well, and, and yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. By all means, you know, feel free. I just, so you understand what's happening tonight. We're, we're, we're not really looking at this from the site plan's perspective tonight. Um, what we're doing is our board is, is we're, we're reviewing the report and recommendation to give to the town board. The town board is then really at this point looking at this and deciding, you know, the incentive zoning piece of it. And i- if they happen, you know, if they do move forward and approve this, then it will come back to this board for an actual site plan. Um, so I mean, if, if you want to take a look at these and closer, you know, closer look, you know, feel free, but i- it's not something that we're acting on tonight. This, this is just a, oh, no, no, that's why I just want to get that up for people to think that, you know, usually that's how the process is, is something comes into us and we will be looking at a site plan review or seeker or something, but it being that this is an incentive zoning process, it has to go back to the town board, really. Um, for their review and approval, because what they're actually doing is changing the zoning of the property, um, which is a town board function and not a planning board. So um, Ron, would you know that or?
Well, okay.
Yeah, hello, Ron.
Right, so the, the town board at their last meeting in October, I believe it was, sent a request to this board for report and recommendation, uh, which is standard for any incentive rezone. Uh, that draft report was posted on the website last week. Yesterday, we received uh, comments from the applicant on it. Those comments were posted yesterday on the town website for anybody to review. Um, tonight's purpose of the meeting tonight is to, uh, hear the planning board's comments, what changes they want to make to the draft. Um, in one form or fashion, all of the comments from the departments here at the town as well as uh, staff members uh, have had input on this. Um, and now then, once it's approved by the planning board, uh, goes back to the town board, they meet. The next time they meet will be Wednesday night of next week. It's not the normal Tuesday night because of Election Day. Um, and they can either decide then or, or if planning board isn't ready to act tonight, they can, uh, hold it till the next meeting, which I believe is scheduled for the sixteenth, if we have one. Uh, that's up to the planning board. So.
So then we as makers to this property need to wait and vote to.
No, no.
I don't know when, when are we supposed to jump in and bring that up?
The planning board, it's an open meeting and, and, and it's not a public hearing, so you know, you're not giving testimony on anything. Uh, but any comments that you have, I'm sure the planning board would like to hear.
Yeah, I mean, something like the flooding that you brought up, I mean, that's obviously something that, you know, we would be looking to, to find more information about tonight. It's just the specifics of this actual layout of the site plan is what makes sure.
Yeah, we've seen, oh, around the property, you can see him right there as well. But elevation, which concerns the, the water, is a, is a, a level.
Yeah, and honestly, I don't even think we, we have that level of detail in our package yet. I mean, that, that's something that, you know, that the applicant would not move forward with if, if they were granted the rezoning, because for them to spend the money and the engineering to develop that type of level of detail of these plans, I don't think they, the applicant would probably get into.
Ryan, you can show them, point out, there is some tension areas on there. Just to show, in case they don't understand what the, how them works.
Yeah, that'd be good. I mean, just give us, yeah, ballpark where.
Show a little bit, just so everybody understands some, maybe, I don't know, but.
This, on this conceptual plan, uh, we have some stormwater management areas located in the southeastern corner in this area as well as, um, the northeastern corner and then the northern portions of the project. And yep, just south, this is the railroad tracks right here, just south of them. And they, um, the property has a natural high point somewhere in the middle vicinity of this property where it either goes to the north or south.
Well, it'll be last. I think that's our.
Yeah, and part of our design, as we go through the actual overall preliminary design process, will be to meet the New York State Stormwater, um, D C guidelines, and then we'll part of that will be to make sure that we're reducing runoff, the runoff rates under the proposed conditions um, from the pre-existing condition. And we'll direct the stormwater to the stormwater management property in the way you're going.
Which is down the road a bit until it gets approved, because this is all conceptual right now, because the town board needs to change the zoning to approve this build out of what they're looking to do at this time.
Yeah, because there's a, the size of these lots are a little different than what is allowed under the R, R twenty-five, I believe it was. RS twenty-five, yeah, so they, I mean, some of the lots are smaller than what the current zoning allows in that, and that's what the incentive zoning is, is. That part of the process is doing, it's allowing for a smaller lot size to be constructed in a residential area that's smaller than what is currently in code for the RS twenty-five. Um, which is what a quarter acre or thirty?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand square feet, so.
A little over half.
Yeah, so some of these are, are, are smaller, some meet, I believe, right, Ron? Some of these, these do meet the, the, the size requirements, but because some of them don't, that's what this incentive zoning process is for. Um, also part of it, I believe, is, is currently zoned as a limited industrial.
Correct.
So that portion where there might be a residential lot now would not be allowed in a, a limited industrial zoned area, so that kind of why we're here tonight to, to discuss this incentive zoning and then give the report and recommendation, um, you know, from, from this board to the town board is to, you know, the bigger picture, from a planning perspective of, of allowing, you know, some residential uses and what was previously a, an industrially zoned area or smaller lots in that. And um, by them doing this, they're offering incentives for the change in that zoning to the town. And, and that's really what we're looking at tonight, because those incentives are offering up, uh, you know. We're, we're making the recommendation to the town board, basically, at that point, these incentives are kind of what we're looking for. But that's something that during the site plan process, it's something they would entertain and, and look at and analyze to, to make sure that they contain everything that's on their property. Um, it is part of the, the regs that they have to do, uh, by DEC standards. Um, and I mean, if it's a, uh, you know, that's something that I think the town board is also would be looking at that, you know, I mean, they have to comply with that. They, they cannot, you know, as part of the secret process that we go through, if it does get rezoned as part of the site plan approval, they have to meet these requirements and they, they can't discharge.
What, 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 what property is yours?
Yeah, I'm sorry, actually.
What's the name?
Larry's right here.
Okay.
I'm right here.
Okay.
And I'm right behind there.
Yeah, mine runs from this spot to the rail.
Okay.
And it has four sections flooded every year. It's getting worse every year from the law itself.
And can the runoff from retention times actually flow into those that goes through there? I mean, it's
Yeah, so that would, I mean, I, depend, you know, not having looked in great detail of these grades of the, the, the properties around there, but I mean, the, the pond outfall will discharge to whatever the local water body is. So if there's a creek over there, it would discharge to, but the discharge rate, you know, the amount of water that it's discharging, you know, say, per minute can't be any greater than what the current conditions are. So like if it's discharging, say, you know, two feet per minute, that pond can't discharge any greater than that, so it should not make anything worse by these regs, but it won't necessarily make it better than what you guys are experiencing right now by meeting the regs, but that is something the town board could consider that, you know, possibly they would, you know, um, you know, request an oversized stormwater basin maybe for that area. I mean, that would be something that the town board as part of the incentive zoning could, could potentially, you know, make any requirement, uh, you know, for the, the development to do as well. As those to, to help accommodate some of this, the problems in that area. We might be able to make that recommendation, but on this one applicant, I think that's where you're going, Ron.
Yeah, I, I met yesterday with county planning, and I brought to their attention that in all county hazard mitigation plan that FEMA requires, um, we have for the past two, uh, cycles, which is ten years, uh, identified the need to do a drainage district study of this area. And that drainage district study extends back into as far as the town of South Bristol. So, uh, county planning is putting together a scope, and they will be going for federal FEMA monies to do that drainage study to identify what corrective needs need to be made. As you know, Larry, with the years, uh, there's been a lot of opposition, a lot of misinformation out there from, um, some of the rural community members uh, that were opposed to having a townwide drains district because it was felt that they would be paying the benefit of people that weren't living in the area and development that was going on in the western side of the town. And basically, uh, we are optimistic that something is now going to be done uh, on this. Uh, it is something that will not be done just for Farmington, but for the entire drainage district. For in Argua, Mud Creek, Black Brook, uh, um, Beaver Creek, the whole large drainage areas themselves, which makes sense. You, you, you can't just fix the problem here in Farmington without having created some for adults. And so that's something that they're putting together and, and being acting on. Hopefully, this time it will get established, because as you know, uh, evidence just down the road from you over there by Farmington Towing. I mean, every, every year you got a pond there with us playing around on it, swimming around on it. So that is something to be looked at. Your point, though, that you make about concern for drainage, uh, that is something that will be considered by the town engineers and staff when they get into the preliminary design of this. Right now, we don't have a lot of detailed design information to, to answer the question whether it's going to be or not, but we do want to know what your concerns are, and we appreciate that. Yeah, one of the, one of, one of the things you're alluding to, though, is the existing drainage problem is on the east side of County Road Eight. Now, this is early. Yeah, but it causes the problem on the west side.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and so, you know, they're, they're working on that solution. Uh, this, when it gets all said and done, uh, DEC and the town engineers are obligated to ensure that the runoff doesn't worsen the conditions that are out there. Uh, so thank you for bringing that. I know, it's very flat.
And that's part of the challenge, I think, too, why it needs to be a bigger picture, right, Ron? I mean, it's not just, you know, the Farmington area, it's other areas outside of this is drained to, and that's why it's, it's tough, you know, really too much with just one application, because it isn't necessarily something that they're create. It's a pre-existing thing and, and, and it really requires a bigger picture, look at everything that's beyond just what the, the point is, just for, for this one project, so.
The, the low-lying area there east of the village of Victor is a, a, of concern to the county. They, they share with your problems of drainage and, and the need for identifying the concerns, how to address them. Uh, is what we're going to try to come up with a solution.
Oh, timeline, I guess, is really, tonight, we were, um, you know, go, go review the recommendations that, that were, were drafted, um, for the, the current incentive zoning, um, that will go back to the town board. You said, Ron, that's next.
Well, at whatever point in time you're ready to send it back.
Yeah, so, so one, once, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll go through the rest of the board and, uh, you know, we've, we've heard some comments here, uh, tonight, so our report, you know, we'll, we'll see about tonight, whether we, we act on that tonight or, or the next meeting that we have. If, if we do act on it tonight, it would go, what, it's, it acts Wednesday, correct, Ron?
It could go as early as next Wednesday.
To the town board and then town board reviews, yeah, what's that process look like, Ron?
Uh, the, the town board may receive it, they may act on it, or they may hold it to review and take, take the minutes of tonight's meeting to see what concerns there were. Um, they may take it up at their next meeting after that, which would be on the twenty-second, I think, of, of November. But at that point, all that's going to happen is that they would direct me to draft a local law to rezone these two parcels of land, which are currently zoned, uh, RS twenty-five limited industrial and a major thoroughfare overlay district. Uh, rezoning would be incentive zoning with the major thoroughfare overlay district. The overlay district will continue. That local law has to go to county planning. County planning meets once a month. The next month that they would meet would be December, the second Wednesday of December, they would meet. Now, this is assuming that things move along, that they would meet. Um, the town board would not schedule a public hearing until after they had the county report and recommendation. So that would be the second meeting in December, and I don't even know what that date is. Um, for them to open a public hearing to hear the rezoning. It more than likely might be the first meeting in January, who knows? Um, but then, then they close the public hearing. They, uh, uh, receive a, a resolution, a very detailed resolution, which sets forth all of the criteria for development of these two parcels, including any special conditions that may be imposed on connectivity to the water lines or connectivity to, uh, a second means of access to the site. Uh, a, 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 a number of things that haven't even been thought of yet, okay? That gets approved, then the next step that Ryan has to do is to prepare detailed set of drawings showing all utilities, all natural drainage, all stormwater conditions. Help me if I'm missing something here, Ryan, but you know, you know, all that detail, which is what then the planning board has to receive and hold a public hearing on. It's at that point, you'll have the calculations on what the runoff will be on two adjacent properties and how it is, is being proposed to be mitigated. So what are we looking at? February, March?
Before it comes back to us.
Yeah. So it, it's not something that's done overnight, but once it's done, then they only have to come in with final for each of the phases. So as long as the finals agree with what's on the overall preliminary plan, they're good to go.
And from when the town board opens a public hearing, Ron, they have, there's thirty days, right, for public comment? Is that the case?
Well.
For town board?
For town board, there's no.
Okay.
They can continue the public hearing for as long as they want.
Okay.
Okay, now, when you, you just jogged my memory. When it comes back to the planning board, they'll have to do a detailed environmental coordinated review with other agencies, state DOT, the health department, state DEC, to address the stormwater and the wetland issues, all of these. Okay? Um, and you, you'll get their comments. They'll get their comments so, so that they know, uh, how to act. It's, it's.
Correct.
And one of them is down with either two bills.
Correct. One, yeah, one's on either side of the existing lot that's, that's along the front.
Concern of the fires.
Yeah, well, and that's something New York State DOT is going to basically dictate. I mean, they, they have jurisdiction on that road, so even if we wanted to tell them to move it, DOT could say, no, that's a better spot, and, uh, you know, they have ultimate say on that, because it's, it's really their jurisdiction, it's their road, so I'm assuming that, you know, there's been preliminary conversations at this point with DOT, and they're somewhat of an agreement about the, you know, general layout of where those are, but I mean, that is definitely something that is, I hate to say it, but it's kind of outside of our, our jurisdiction, really, because it really falls back to New York State DOT, since it's their road. Uh, if it was on, like, say, if there's an access on to Colette there, that would be, you know, being its town road, then we could have a little bit more that we could influence, I'll say. Um, but, but on ninety-six, we're, we're probably going to really have to defer to what DOT will allow, because they will only allow it at certain occasions. And they will make sure all the site distances are, you know, uh, meet the requirement for the speed limit on that road and, and all the other criteria they have for those. So, but that, that is definitely something that we, you know, we had discussed, uh, or had thought of at least internally, you know, that, that is a concern, obviously. Um, as well as some of the stormwater, I drive down Colette every single day and see it when it rains real hard and floods out into the roadway now, so. My railroad tracks and, yeah, yeah, so, I mean, it is definitely something that if this moves further down, then we will definitely really looking into. It's just with, with level of detail that we have before us right now, it's hard to really give you guys any kind of real, you know, accurate answers, and it's really just more of a, a procedural thing and, and making sure these, uh, incentives that they're offering up for the, you know, consideration of the, the downsides in some of these lots and changing some of the uses. You know, what is, is sufficient, really, or, or what, or what the town board considers that, uh, for the, the incentives. That's really where we're at now. We'll get into the, kind of the weeds of the things, uh, uh, if it moves forward.
Yeah, as long as you mention that, the timeline, Ron, it's hard to get enough rain, so if there's no hurdle you know, these start dates, machines and, and they that's like, that's what.
Yeah, and that's. Yeah.
We won't know that for a while. We won't know that for a bit.
Yeah, it really depends what they get into, I'd say, I mean, you know.
Because it all depends on how many phases they're gonna do and stuff.
Yeah, as far as an end date, it would be how, how it's phased, I mean, and some of these, these subdivisions that we've seen, I mean, some of them, um, I mean, there's eight, that eight S, you know, there's, what, which, what's that something over by Beaver Creek Craft that?
Well, Auburn Meadows.
Auburn Meadows, yeah.
Larry back in two thousand and six.
Yeah.
And they're just now getting ready to build the last section.
Yeah, so, so some of the duration, i- it's hard to judge just because of both market conditions, I mean, you know, they sell like hotcakes, I mean, Hickory Rise was, what, two, three years probably? I mean, it went pretty quick, yeah.
Different, it depends on market.
Market, I'll say today, to the interest rates the way they are.
Right, yeah, so it, even, you know, so it's really hard to say, I mean, I think uh, the, the, as far as the start date, it would probably be, I mean, at Vastron, what?
Well, I, I don't know, the, the developers back there, I, I think that they were able to start construction next summer, late fall, uh, not late summer, mid fall, that would be pushing the, you know, on the.
Yeah, I mean, by the time you get through.
That, that would assume everything is.
No hurdle.
Yeah, right.
No problem.
There, there, there's a lot, there's certain timeframes that have to be, yeah, that's why I asked Ron about the town board timeframes because with the seeker process, there's real specific timeframes that, you know, so many days for public review and comment, you know, and then it comes back to us and there are so many days between our next meeting, so it, it's, you know, it's not just a, a real quick process, especially at this point in the game on this, and it's really, at this point, they can't even build what they, they want to build there because of the incentive, you know, with this ozone properly, so. This is really just the first step in the process. Um, and, and then from there, we just, we'll, we'll, we'll see what happens and we'll go from there.
And I was just wondering, um, if there was any plan or thought or discussion about wildlife that currently feeds, lives, lies on the parks and territories and the foxes here. Cause I did recently see a six pack of coyotes that are around that property. And so they're gonna have to end somewhere, so we all have children and pets. So, if they ever push down on that property, possibly our, that, this is just another good example.
And it, it's actually something under seeker, the D E C requires us to, to, to look at, you know, impacts the wildlife, impacts the any nature, really, I mean, that's under the, of D E C, so that's something to look at, consider. Um, you know, as, as far as that, I don't know, there's a, just based on what I've seen in the past, it's, it's hard to say there's gonna be a major impact on that because without it being a fenced property, there's opportunities for them to go wherever and, and based on D E C's rights and statutes, it's not really something that's, you know, unless there's a direct impact, it, it's hard to really think this would have a major impact, which is one of the criteria we have to evaluate under seeker. Um, you know, for those, that wildlife, and, you know, as long as there's that development of that adjacent parcel there, that would be something, you know, that would be, uh, often for the wildlife to move over to into that area, or maybe they just become, you know, well, uh, relocated across the street or, you know, migrate outward where people aren't as much, uh, maybe across the thruway or, 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 you know, further east. Up, up over, yeah, over my way, I mean, I, I live north of Tyre and A, so maybe they'll have my way.
I have my window this morning.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Wow. Wow.
So, one last concern that I have on my.
Sure.
Then is. I hope. And that would end my Monday, because you have within five hundred, so that will help.
On the backside of your property or something?
Yeah, on my property.
Um, which is, that's the, on four hundred. What do you, what do you think?
From a D, I don't know, that'd be from a D E C standpoint, I don't know, I mean, that's for dwelling, I believe, you know, for, for, for hunting, so I mean, if you're within that range, that would be, yeah.
But if the, it happened, then I would definitely be within.
Within five hundred. Yeah. Well, and, sure. Yeah, that's something to I don't know how we, you know, that's something, I mean, I guess we can take under consideration, I don't know, unfortunately, there's a two with that one, really, that gets in, unless you're, a lot of those parcels behind it, maybe. Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, if they'd be comfort, I mean, I, I, you know, I, 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 you know, I, I'm sure you're, 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 I mean, that's, that's part of the reason why we moved out here originally, that's, you know, same, same reason, I, you know. Yeah, it's, I, I, I moved from Patton Field because I saw the same thing and, and that's, uh, it's just. Yeah. Yeah.
How many dwellings do we got here? Sixteen.
Sixteen. As proposed now, I mean, again, this is just the incentive zone process, so, process, so I mean, town board could look at this and say, you know, you know, maybe it's less, you know.
Ryan, do you have the plan of what can be built out with you up there that if we left it the same? Yeah, I know we do, but I didn't know if, like, if we left it, what it could be built now.
Sorry about that.
Could be built there.
This is what could be.
Commercial buildings and stuff.
Really fearing ally.
You kind of just pointed what, what those buildings are, Ryan, just so people understand, like, what, what, what those could be, because I, I believe some of those are the bigger industrial type uses.
Yeah, I mean, these buildings are, could be forty, fifty, sixty thousand square foot flex limited industrial space, so they could be, there could be multiple uses in these buildings, but um, the overall impervious footprint will be much larger on a project like this, rather than the potential, the primarily residential focus that will pose there. Um, and the concept plan that we're, that we're proposing, uh, that does include twenty-five percent to thirty-three percent open space areas. So, it will leave, right now, we're proposing to leave paper wooded areas along the port portion of the property, the wetland corridor through the southern portion of the property. Uh, the majority of the residential uses will be in the farming lanes, some central area of the property.
Yeah, so that, that's kind of what they, they, they do, I mean, that, uh, in, in generating that plan shows what the potential uses could be versus what they're proposing, and that's kind of how they, they evaluate, that what the town board evaluates, you know, what the incentives that they're, they're offering for that change in use. Um, you know, based on what it could be compared to the proposed change. So, you know, before they accept that, they have to, they're, you know, kind of on board a little bit, I'll say, with, with, with the idea at least, I mean, there's a lot of the details that have to be ironed out, and that's kind of the, really the process of starting to. So, um, but, but just to give everyone an idea of what it could be, I mean, it could be developed for a lot of different uses, I mean, so if it wasn't just a, a house behind you, I, I mean, it could be, you know, some manufacturing facility and, and so, the, the same challenge. Uh, but, you know, it's just the, the zoning and location of that parcel is just kind of what's, what's taking place now in, in the town. Um, you know, this stuff's out in the thruway really, so.
So, did the lots sell and rebought and that's what we hear a lot of times?
Um.
Do owner wants to?
That's good, I, I don't know the background actually on that one, I, I mean, the Rob, Ron, you said, um.
Which one?
Where there, the, the lots where they're, were lots sold and bought, I guess, combined and, uh, made.
Brendan, you want to talk about?
Sure.
Evening, everyone, my name's Rob Brenner, I'm, uh, one of the co-developers of the property, so to answer the question directly, uh, by way of background, I'm a, a town of Farmington resident, so this, uh, this project's different for me because it's, uh, it's a project in my hometown. Um, I'm a land use attorney by trade, uh, half of this property is actually family property, so that's why you didn't see it marketed. Um, it's, uh, distant relatives of my wife's family, the other property we bought about a year ago from the D E P group. Um, there were some, some development activity previously, I know that the town is not receptive to, uh, there was an active deal before we purchased it with a solar developer for a large-scale project, and I know that doesn't comport with zoning. Um, but that was envisioned, and then that deal was terminated, we purchased the property, um, I would say about six months ago now. Um, we've been working with B M E associates in the town since that time to come up with a plan, uh, that fits well, I, I would say Ryan didn't touch on this point, but from a density perspective, uh, we came in, as you might expect any development group to do initially, with significantly higher density, as Ryan mentioned, the density right now under two hundred and sixteen lots is about one point eight acres per lot. Uh, we didn't come in with a number that was about fifty percent higher, so we were proposing initially about three hundred and thirty homes. Um, at two hundred and sixteen homes, this is a project that, that makes economic sense, uh, but it's a thin margin because of the infrastructure costs associated with the two entrance roads, uh, that come off ninety-six with, uh, with the creek that goes through there, we don't have any developable area through the two creek extensions. So, there's about, uh, I want to say two thousand meter feet of, of zero loaded road, we say in the development world, uh, to get into the subdivision, so it's a very costly project from an infrastructure perspective. Um, so that's why the two hundred and sixteen lots are necessary, we had initially proposed as well uh, a residential component along the ninety-six frontage. Um, but staff and the supervisor thought that, uh, retaining some light industrial or G B use along the frontage uh, would help with what's happening in, in other areas of town as far as enhancing streetscape and, and, uh, a town feel, um, as you come out of the commercial corridor at, at intersection of ninety-six. Um, the other comment I did want to make was, uh, we're not proposing any access on, on to Colette Road, so as Ryan mentioned, that their rear portion of the site will be maintained as a tree, uh, woodlot area, there'll be some hiking trails proposed through that area to connect to the town park. That was something that was important to staff, so we're working on that. Uh, and then we're working on determining what are appropriate uses, our interior open space or green space within the subdivision, so we don't want this to, to come across or feel like a very dense community, I know you see two hundred and sixteen boxes drawn on a map, uh, but it's, it's not as dense as the Hickory Rise subdivision that everyone's likely familiar with from a, uh, density perspective of one point eight acres per lot. Uh, Hickory Rise, I think Ryan is, is closer to do well, one point two or one point three. Um, so this is a, a less dense project, but it was a long-winded way to answer your question of, uh, property was not for sale, uh, it came to us through a, a relationship and, uh, we're local developers, our, our law office is in Canandaigua. We understand the market well, my, my wife's family, uh, lives off of Green Road, they have, uh, over a hundred acres there, so we're, uh, we're Farmington residents through and through. We want this to be something we're proud of and the town's proud of. Thank you. Any, any questions for me or should I?
No, 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 I just wanted you to answer that background, because I honestly had no clue about that, so. Did you hear? No.
Right, right.
No.
Reverse then, oh, it's, it's one point eight lots per acre, not one point eight acres per lap.
But, but overall, Ryan, it's still less dense than Hickory Rise?
Correct, Hickory Rise is based on, um, our town, which is ten thousand square foot lots.
Okay.
Our minimum lot size are, um, close to twelve, twelve thousand square.
Okay. Yes, yeah, that newer one over there.
They do not.
Nope, there's a, a large parcel that's in between, probably a hundred plus acre, yeah. Well, a- and actually, I mean, one of the things that we are looking at, and one of the recommendations that our board had is, is planning for a future development. And that's just so you guys are aware that, um, we are looking at that, that is something that we are, are, are recommending that the town board considers, that there would be a future connection from this into the other, uh, you know, if that other lot ever was developed, that was one of our recommendations from a planning perspective, it would make sense to have the two neighborhoods connected, then connect, you know, um, utilities through that water sewer, sidewalks, and, and roadways as well. So, that, that, that's something that is part of what we're considering tonight and, and the incentive zoning recommendations that are before us.
I don't have any other questions, Ryan. Um, just how we keep the kind of progress of this?
Um, Ron, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll see where it goes tonight here, um, and then after that, we would be at the, you know, next board meeting, potentially at the town board.
Like this or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's just the town board is the elected people, not, not, uh, not us, so. Um, they're, they're in charge of making decisions with, with zoning, um, you know, money stuff, we're, we're just the planning people, the, the bigger picture of, of, you know, does this fit land use-wise, and then we get into the details of, of, you know, site layout, grading, drainage, that all, you know, those important for, um, that perspective, and so that's kind of so to- to town board would be next Tuesday, Ron?
Next Wednesday.
Next one, Zach.
That's Wednesday, the next meeting, it depends on.
Yeah.
Whether they're ready to consider.
Yeah.
And.
Right, so even, even if we, we act on our, our end of it tonight, the, the, the town board may or may not choose to have that on their, their agenda then. All of that's on the website, though, if you go to Town of Farm. Yeah, yeah, ju- just like, same thing with our meetings, a- any of the agendas are posted, what, two weeks in advance?
The, the agendas for the town board meetings are posted on the Friday before the Tuesday meeting. So, this one probably will be posted on Friday before the Wednesday meeting. Um, I, maybe it'll be Monday, I don't know. I had.
Friday or Monday would be posted on what their, the, the agenda will be. Yeah, and, and if it isn't, if it wouldn't be the, this may, it would be the, probably the following one, so again, just, just keep an eye on the, on the website. Same thing with us, when it, whenever it would come back to us, if it does, it would be posted on the, on the, on the town's website as well.
I, I do think the public hearing was continued to the night. That doesn't mean that they will do anything, if they don't have your report, they'll just continue it to the twenty-second, I mean, that's the way it is.
And it would be listed under power properties that go on the agenda?
Yeah, powers incentive rezoning.
And incentives of rezoning is what really just to, to keep an eye out for, at least while, while it's going through the town board process. Um, then once it gets, I'm assuming it would still probably be called powers, whatever, subdivision or development, so. Um, is there anything else from the, here? Okay, um, is there anything else you have, Ron?
No, I just, I, you've had the draft, um, now it's your chance to decide whether you want to act on it or you want to conserve for two weeks, uh, if you want to act on it. Is it okay in the way that this, if you want to add something, take something out? That's what you're asked with tonight.
Yep, um, okay, I guess with that and other comments from the, to the community here, um, it went online, it wants to add anything that hasn't been discussed yet?
It's just, uh, Dean.
It's Dean Power, okay, um, that's it, Augie, I guess he probably, uh, doesn't have a whole lot to add since he's at the point, but if there's anything you, uh, want to add, please. Oh. Yeah, um, I guess at that point, then we'll go over to the board, if the board's got any questions or comments. Aaron, you'll start down here, Ron?
I am curious, I'm one, all right, uh, it's about the sidewalks, so, um. It says the applicant agrees to install a sidewalk along the frontage on ninety-six and complete the gap. And then with that, they will put the sidewalk along proposed B, but only as if it's a, uh, final site proposed for the final site plan. Why are we not just putting it on the recommendation, it has to be on there?
I can answer that, um, one of the amenities proposed for this project is a substantial financial contribution to the town sidewalk fund, so that the town can allocate that one for any off-site sidewalk uses that they deem fit and appropriate at whatever time they deem appropriate. Um, this, therefore, we're not, this project doesn't propose to construct any off-site sidewalks or, other than the financial contribution.
Or other than the financial contribution to the town, um, there is a gap, therefore. There's a gap on the lot that's in between our parcel on ninety-six. Your comment is that this is within the M T O D and that both access roads should have the sidewalk along them. We don't necessarily, um, disagree with that, and we agree that sidewalks will be appropriate when there's actual development along. That road B, because otherwise it's really an eight hundred foot sidewalk to nowhere, the internal sidewalk, um. The internal si- uh, pedestrian sidewalk connection, uh, will be on one side of all the dedicated roads within the community. And then there, we are proposing an initial sidewalk along the western road. And that will connect to, uh, the future sidewalk along ninety-six, the Fair Dog Land, that sidewalk contribution could. Could be a part of, of contributing to, um. Therefore, at this point, we think it should just be, um, tied with the first. Uh, commercial development along road B, because otherwise it's going nowhere, but in order to, um. Alleviate that town's concern, the applicant has, um, agreed to connect the gap, which would be a concern of the town at this point.
So you put a sidewalk in front of the house?
And then, in the right away.
So you're not going from your property down to. Fairdale Glen?
No.
That's part of the other stuff possibly.
Part of the amenity is that we would provide the engineering design for that, but not the construction.
I'm, I'm still under. I, I, I still recommend that her M T O D were put in the sidewalks.
And it would be constructed when, as part of a condition of approval for C of O for the first. L I or G B use that would be associated with dedicated real B, that's the intent, just to delay it. We're not looking to avoid that.
Yeah.
But just delay it. Until it's appropriate, because otherwise it'd be a sidewalk.
Aaron hasn't been here long enough, but, but. We can still put sidewalks into nowhere, we've done it before on other projects, and after a while they do connect after, it just might take a little bit, but. We still put the sidewalks in, we have a piece up here on Beaver Creek that goes nowhere in front of commercial property, but. Some, it, to the rest of the sidewalk system in front of any O's and everything else, so. I mean, we have made other developers and other projects do it, so I mean, it is. Something that can still be figured out in my eyes.
Figure out.
Yeah, I mean, it, it obviously it's not, right, we gotta either put it in, right, we've got. But it is something that. And I get what they're saying, I've heard it many times from other developers, but it doesn't go anywhere, but. After a while, so many little places that don't go, go together, it just might take some years, you know? But there's land to the left, there's land right, and it's all farmland, so you never know what's gonna happen.
And the residents, they will still have access to Route ninety-six via the western access, and then they continue along the entire property. I mean, it's either, it's a condition of a site, the overall site plan approval or subdivision approval for this, or. The first commercial user that's associated with road B. And our preference would be that would be associated with the first user.
There's, there's, unfortunately, there's a bunch of little spots like that around town right now, and. More and more, they kind of grow together and everybody can walk farther and farther, I mean, I live, you know, close to. Yeah, so it works, but.
Yep.
I understand most developers don't want to do it, because it goes nowhere, but. Unfortunately, someday it might go somewhere around here, so.
We certainly understand that, part of the offer is that. The applicant would complete the gap along the entire ninety-six frontage, and we think that would be an immediate benefit to the town. And then at the point that road B becomes developed with a L I or G B user, then it will be appropriate, and then. Part of that site plan approval can be contingent upon the introduction of that sidewalk versus you.
No, 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 thank you, thank you, I just, I. Her M T O D sidewalks. And that's what I'm, that's my, what I'd like. That we have those sidewalks on proposed road B and that tax, the tax law on ninety-six. Instead of making, eh, eh, instead of making it a final site plan proposal.
That's basically what this is saying.
Right, they wanted, they wanted us to.
Wave it.
Wave, wave B right now. And then make it a final site plan condition. I, I just assume just avoid that following M T O D.
Yeah, and, and, and. The wave at the point, uh, road B is a two-sided road. And we only put sidewalk on one side, so the first one in on road B goes on the side where the sidewalk doesn't want to connect to. Where, where are we at at that point as a town? We've got at that point several residential properties that want. To be able to walk down to whatever it is that's going in there on ninety-six. So, I would, I appreciate the comment, that's a town board policy decision. For them to, to consider, you know, yourself, that your guidelines say sidewalk on one side. In the M T O D, which is this.
And that's what the current draft resolution states, correct, huh? So I mean, that, that's, that's included right now?
Right.
Yeah, so it is in there, Aaron, that was just.
Yeah, it's, it's just ask, ask, yeah, like I said, it's something we'll have to deal with final cycle.
Yep, but our recommendation, I think, would still be to add it and, and, you know, keep it as, you know, the town board decide whether or not, that's, that's something they want to. Possibly waive until file site plan, but our recommendation would be to keep it in just like the rest of them. Alright, I'm good, that's it, Adrian?
I guess I need. The L I up on ninety-six, you guys had proposed before. Houses there or something, but the town's saying it needs. You're looking for L I in that area?
With the town supervisor, um, one of the preferences was to maintain an L I footprint. Or a commercial footprint along the ninety-six border, and that'd be more fitting than a residential. And.
I'm just concerned the L I lots are tiny. With all the setbacks on the wetlands and stuff around the creek that. Development of those lots are small and it's, I'm.
And, and.
I don't know if that's the best use for the land yet.
And part of that rezoning will allow G B uses as well as L I uses in that area. So it may not be a flex, uh, forty thousand foot flex building.
It could be like a spa store or something, I don't know, I'm just trying to pick something small and simple, or a little restaurant, I guess, or something, whatever, but. And then, so, I don't know. Then these other driveways that go off to the other properties, or like, they look like, they're not driveways, they're just open spots that.
Right away, right.
That's, like dead end roads or will be dead end roads, is that the way I'm taking that? To the left there.
Well, to the left, we're not.
Like right away A or B?
Providing the reservation for the ability for the future development to the west to tie into the subdivision. And then they would utilize the two access points that this project will obtain permits from the D C and Army Corps. As well as the New York State P O T.
Okay. And then the one in the back, is that more so you can get to the stormwater management areas to maintain them and stuff there by forty-one and forty-two? Way in the back there.
Northern end.
Yeah, there's like a gap there, but I mean, you'll never, there's not gonna be a road really.
No, that's, that's not.
Is that more of an access point for the storm waters, or what is that?
That could be a potential access point for a water main connection or a trail or something for that area.
And that trail that's kind of depicted now won't go back at number forty-two of the property, I see.
Yeah, that would probably be adjusted as part of the.
Um, my bigger concern then after that is the open spaces in there, who's gonna maintain all that, and. Is there gonna be an H O A in the housing tract or something?
To avoid an H O A and, uh. We, we agree with your recommendation for the town board to consider it, that would be either option one. That, the town, that the town would accept the open space areas as conservation easements. Or the applicant is also open to the individual lat lines being extended through the open space areas, and then you would have individual conservation easement areas. Um, individual, uh, flats.
So each lot would be longer? Would just maintain it or something?
Correct, the, the developable area will be the same, but then the lat lines would just project farther. Through the open space areas, the open space areas, the outline of them would stay the same, but anything. Any portion of the lot within the open space area would be part of a conservation event.
So it'd have to be maintained as long then, at, at that point, right, or? You know.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, cause I mean, would that be?
I guess like, I'm concerned about the. Open space and who's gonna maintain it, I don't know if I want to put that on the town's.
Yeah, so, so the three points, so H O A, we're, we're not excited about doing H O A, because with H O As come. You know, potential neighbor disputes and disagreement, et cetera. Um, so the, the idea initially that was discussed with town staff was potentially creating an adware special tax district. A conservation district that would pay to maintain these, uh, these reserved open space areas, so it would essentially be like a lighting district. And the rationale for that was folks that live in other parts of the town outside of this subdivision shouldn't pay to ma- maintain and mow the grass in this neighborhood. It's not fair, right, that shouldn't be spread out across the, the general tax base in the town. You know, if that's something that's not palatable to the town board, the other option that Ryan was just alluding to is we would extend. The lots, and then the, the, uh, open space portion of the lots, there would be, uh, a deep restriction, conservation easement. Append it to each lot, and it basically would say, you know, that the lot has to be maintained. For, for certain purposes, right, and a lot of those that you see around town, Victor's very fond of them. You know, it gets planted initially by the developer, and then basically the rule is hands off, let it grow, let it become woods. You can't put a shed back there, you can't mow the grass, it's got to sort of grow in, so it becomes part of a tree portion of the neighborhood over time. So those are really the three options we're looking at, and I'd say we're, we're not excited about an H O A, we think that that has downsides. I, I think where we're likely to head with this is the last option I was talking about, where it's, it's privately owned under conservation easement with. Maintenance obligation being on each individual lot owner, and perhaps it's just not grass, it's, it's tree or, or planted with, with some mix. Uh, by the development team, but when the lot is, is sold and the house is built. I'm, I'm not sure, you know, Ron, if there's been any more discussions on the staff side about a conservation district, I, I think there was some concern and hesitation around that. Because that too has cost and complexity, and it's, it's great to pass along the cost, but there's an administration associated with it that, that hasn't sent to the town.
Yeah, we have one conservation district in the town, and that's over Hickory Rise. And the reason we have that is because it protects those drum ones that are there from encroachment and. Further develop. There are no drums on the site. I don't think the town board is receptive to taking on more conservation districts if there isn't any. A unique natural feature to be protected. I just like it, and however, that we did, when we did Auburn Meadows. Uh, with Spartan Drive off the Town Line Road, those lots on the west side of Spartan. Were, uh, identified in conservation easement area. However, the developer never followed through with filing that restriction on the land and the property owners that now. Mowed the lawns and put storage sheds and all kinds of things back there, so that's. That, um, I was for not catching that, um, years ago when that was first proposed. We'll get you this time.
We're happy to file that as a condition, um, just to talk about the reserves up roads. Uh, I know a lot of times development teams come in, you know, a lot of the conversation happens around saving money and reducing costs. Our rationale in responding to the draft resolution on the reserve stub roads is, uh, and I can't see the lot numbers from here, but. The owners on either side of, of this development have expressed at the moment, uh, a very strong desire to, to own and retain their property. And don't have any interest in selling it for, for future development, so, you know, of course, we're gonna make, um. You know, the reservations that the town's recommending, stub out utilities, et cetera. My concern from a development standpoint is if we're gonna sell two homes, and they've got that road between the two lots. If there is never development, uh, that occurs to the west. From a planning perspective, it looks kind of ugly to have a road between two houses. You know, with a guard rail at the end of it that never gets developed, we've all seen that before, I think we're happy to, to, you know, make the reservation. Uh, you know, have it be available in case there is that future development, I would just ask that, you know, would you underground work whatever you all want? Just that we don't pave that and put in gutters, because for the neighbors on either side of that road, if nothing ever happens, it's kind of ugly, they get grass there, and it, it would just. It would feel more residential than roads. And again, I, I, I don't say that from a cost saving perspective, so if you all want to recommend it and require it, that's fine, it's just. As we think about what's that experience gonna be like if there's never development, it might be nice to avoid a paved road between the two houses.
Aaron, do you have anything else?
No, not this time, within, I, I got enough answered right now.
Okay.
Um, well, I, I wasn't sure about the L I zoning or. The properties on ninety-six, I mean, it's already a residential property there, correct?
Yes.
I understand, what I read in here was that they don't want individual driveways out to ninety-six, but. If there's two proposed roads there, they could go sideways, you know, either east or west with driveways from those properties, so. I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily object to the L I zoning, but. You know, I'm also considering residential would be certainly appropriate there, because there's already one there. So I'm kind of on the fence on that.
What did you propose in that area before? Do you remember vaguely, like, was it like to say off of the side of the left side there, did you propose? Three, four houses down through there before you hit the wetlands or something like right there, and then?
Right off, right off.
Not holding you to the numbers, but.
So the first concept plan that B M E put together had a cul-de-sac off this road.
We don't do that.
And, uh, and I, I want to say it had maybe six or eight houses on it. You know, the, the town supervisor's concern was. Up here is owned R S twenty-five presently, this is zoned all light industrial, you know, he and, and Ron and others on town staff. I think rightfully so identified that L I land in the town of Farmington is, is coveted land, right, and, and. They were understanding of the fact that this lends itself to residential, especially on, on comprehensive plans, since it's comp- uh, contemplated more than. You know, warehouse use or solar use, et cetera, other uses you may see creep up here, but they thought it was important, especially with the racetrack across the street. Maintain some, uh, industrial or general business frontage along here. You know, the, the morally home that you're all talking about that, that recently sold, Brian and I walked through it, you know, I. Uh, I suspect the person who bought it, it's, it's gonna try to improve it, the house is in rough shape, I'd be surprised if, if it survives and, and ends up there, uh, long term, so. You know, there may be some future redevelopment of that residential property as well, just because the house is in such rough shape, I mean, if, if that foundation issues. I, I call them major problems. Well, yeah, we, we proposed a cul-de-sac here, and then I think we had residential lots, uh, down. The east driveway, uh, south of the wetlands, not quite to, to ninety-six, but, uh, maybe three or four lots.
Okay, I, I won't object to the L I, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Um, only things I, I've got, uh, the, the L I, I guess I, I kind of could see it both ways, but I do like. Actually preserving that area, honestly, for L I or G B, having multiple options, I don't know how much G B. It's going to be out there with all the other G B we've already got approved in this town currently, so I do like having the option of L I, because we are running out of, uh. L I zoned areas, so, you know, preserving some. So preserving some of that as a future use. I I did like that option. Um, couple my other comments though is on, you know, look at. Um, possibly, you know, shifting some of the lots between forty seven and fifty one. It's backed by the one stormwater basin. Uh, it looked like if if it were to need to be maintained, you may have to drive through a wetland. Um, you know, so i- if that's the case, you may need to uh. We might need a direct access route there so that that we're not violating any. Wetland laws by, you know, through there or or whoever maintains the ponds. Um, you know, so I would take a look at that, how you could, you know, have a. Another access point to that pond if it stays in that location. Uh. Which leads to the other thing is that the stormwater pond, um, are are those dedicated, who who has maintenance responsibility on these under this this proposal? Is that if you don't go with an HOA, obviously, when for them, if it goes to the. You know, to the the responsibility goes to neighbors, who winds up with the stormwater pond?
Yeah, I would. Those conversations need to be further with the the town uh. Departments, um, but we would either propose that they would be dedicated to the town or. A maintenance easement to the town. So those are the two options that we're looking at.
So I guess in my my point of view, if that were to be the case and it does go to the tide, I I would be more towards recommendation of creating a district out there on. I mean, you know, to have that on the taxpayers of of Farmington. For the bulk of maintenance of those facilities, I think in this particular case, it would make more sense then for the the. To have a district so that that neighborhood is paying for the maintenance of those ponds really. Um, I mean, I like that the center part giving it the name, you know, the the property owners, but the the problem I hung up on is that the stormwater pond and. Central cost could be having a long term maintenance of those facilities. So maybe you can do a combination of the two, but that would be the recommendation I would look for, the. Uh, recommendation to the town board. Um. The other thing I was a little concerned with and kind of based upon what we've seen in your eyes is maybe making. Uh. Some type of requirement that the the any outside or or structures in the rear. Or outside storage of of any RVs, boats, that type of stuff might be kind of um. In proportion to the size of a lot, you know, so if a small side lot, you could have, say, a. A two hundred square foot shed, but that's based on a. Say a half acre lot, you know, if this is only eleven thousand, maybe reduce the the size of a lot of structures just because. They own a garage in someone's backyard on eleven thousand square foot lot, basically, so. Um, as far as the recommendation at town board, that would be, you know, that is the. You know, any accessory structure would be proportional to the the size of a lot versus what. For the whole lot department, it might be. So you you'd want that um this. Yeah, I think it would be something that would be something to. To amend or somehow towards, I mean, I I didn't look at the specifics of it, but I just was. Looking at some of those lots and just picturing what you could put back there, you know, I think they allow the what three hundred square foot. And you know, the shed or something.
It was just changed to three hundred square.
Yeah, so I mean, it's just pretty sizable. Structure for something that's only eleven thousand square feet, you know, and you've got a, say, two thousand square foot house on that, you're. A whole lot of lots spaced out, so. Um. So those, yeah, that that's about all I have for any recommendations, so.
So would that one change? And are there any other? Changes to the.
I don't think, does anyone else have any other issues with what the resolution was? I mean, I think yours, it still stands as that, you know. Right round recommendation was in there originally was is as we would act on it is if it's sold out. The town board can decide whether or not that's, you know, our recommendation is to require it, but it's up to them to make that part of the recommendations. So what we're recommending recommending is that it's included, so.
And then, I mean, the only other one. Wasn't, and I'm looking, trying to look right now, but didn't we recommend the stubs for those? Road driveways to go to the property lines or no?
That's what the town department, it's.
Why, right now that's in there as in stub it out to the property line. As the driveway between twelve and thirteen, like he was saying earlier or something, correct? Or was it just the utilities?
No, uh, the the draft um says pavement governs sidewalk.
Does it have to be? It stubs the utilities out to the end of the property there to the right away. Um, do we have to pave? A road there? Or can it just be um? I'm just worried if it's grass, the neighbors, if if I understand it will be built maybe next five years, but somehow the land to the. The power's other land somewhere down the road will be sold though. Could be thirty, forty years, who knows, but. And if we're, I feel like the owners will think that somehow that lands there's because they mowed it for a hundred year. I I, is there a way to put like a stone road in or a pad like it's a? Does it have to be paved? I guess that's about, does it have to be paved and dead ended like he was saying with the guard rail or does it? Is there other options to there?
That's a question for the town highway superintendent. Okay. Uh, I will say over in Hathaway's Corners. There is the first section of Carmen's Way that has been. Uh, designed and put in, which does not go all the way to the property line because of topography, correct, Brian?
Correct.
And that may be the case here, and if that's the case, then the highway superintendent may agree to that. But if it's not, then, you know.
So we, so we can leave it in right now and then change that down the road if it gets to us later again when site plan and everything?
They'll be. Ultimately, it'll be a condition of of the town board one way or another.
So then they're locked in.
That's right.
Yeah, and I I kind of agree. I mean, I. You know, I I just. I want to see the utilities, underground utilities going, but it makes sense to. Grass in my life until the point where the. But that's, I think, that's more of a highway superintendent decision based on, you know. There's a lot of other things we're gonna maintain that now and.
Yeah, I'm not saying we have to follow, but.
Yeah, I I can speak to that. So with with my real estate lawyer hat on, so. The um, so the the road, including the stub out, the reserve right of way, that would all be part of the dedicated road. That would be deeded to the town of Farmington and and they would accept, right? So you, in New York, a property owner, to to your point, sir, property owner can adversely possess property from a municipality. So if it's reserved land owned by the town of Farmington, which it would be. The neighbor, even though they're mowing it in thirty years, if there is ever future development, can't make the position that we now own the land because.
If it's privately owned.
If it's privately owned, they they could try to make that argument.
Right, yeah, yeah, but if there is dedicated with town.
So it has dedicated space to the town.
Well. We're dedicated.
It's gray.
It's gray.
Well, he would have to accept it and without.
Res- res- reserve it if that's shown as a right of way.
Alright, so. Yeah, so I, you know, I I think when we map it, we we would map it as the improved. Areas, but then we would have the reserved right of way as part of a dedicated roadway that that's transferred to the town, so we would have it. On the official map. Um, and and they could accept, I think, and and. Ryan agrees, they could accept the dedicated right of way as part of the road, sure, I mean, for sure. Though unimproved.
If you, if you recall, that's what was originally done with Hathaway's Corners. Carmen's Way right of way was part of an initial subdivision and dedication to the town. The need for the payment at this point is now. Um, due to the fact that the villa is being constructed and to have a secondary access for the villa, that's that's the reason why. Um, Carmen's Way is constructed at this point, otherwise it was just a right of way reservation owned by the, or dedicated to the town.
There's a similarity uh over in Farmington though. There are three thirty two.
Mm-hmm.
Between two homes, there's a sixty foot right of way. That's owned by the town. But the what property owners draw all these years, they're mowing it as part of their lawn.
Okay, so it's not pa- it's not paved or anything or it's not a?
Paved at this time, that's correct.
So it sounds like something we could deal with more at preliminary or.
Well, not if we leave it on.
Oh, yeah.
Resolution, it goes back to the town boards.
They don't have anything to say on it. Town highways, we've been.
Yeah.
And he's basically, as this report says, wants it. Now, if things change. In discussion and more detailed drawings, then that's the way it goes.
But if he passes on to the town board and they approve it. It would have to be paved out unless.
If, if that's.
If the highway superintendent changes down the road, he can cha- we can change that or he can cha- or we.
Right now, you're you're basing this on the information that you have before you.
Correct.
You don't have the detailed designs for the road, the drainage, all that to show how it's going to be affected. So right now, your policy has been with everyone, and and the latest one being. A safe place storage over here on on Commercial Drive, that he had to extend Commercial Drive to the property one. Why would you make an exception here?
Yeah, so we include it now and and then down the road, it's up to the the town board and. Highway superintendent because they're they're the one, you know, you you can make a recommendation down the road, but it's it's ultimately up to the highway superintendent. Because it's dedicated, yes, except that.
We we got stuck once having to go in and tear up a lawn, ten sewer and water and. Something that should have been done years ago and wasn't.
So there's everything else? You guys agree with?
Yeah, I was good with it.
Can you, you wanna, you wanna add yours though about the smaller sized lots, there should be?
Yeah, I just think any accessory uses in the back should be proportional to the the size of the lot.
Uh, that's your comment number three.
Yeah.
I believe, right?
Yeah.
Add that sentence.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, okay. I I'm good with everything else. You good with that one, Ryan?
Yeah, I I think then.
To get back to the sidewalk recommendations. One point that we would make. Um, that the sidewalk, the gap could be um completed with the contribution, the amenity proposed with this project rather than. Having that as a recommendation for this developer to do.
The gap being the house.
The house.
Like, man, anything you want.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it doesn't matter. I mean, you're you're getting it. That's that's something the town board is gonna look at and. Yeah, it's not their property, so I don't. Uh, is anyone here sure feel strongly about that one? And do you have any? Not sure of that. Um, alright, I mean, that's, we can consider that, I guess, and.
Well, I just heard tonight that the developer had agreed to include that. Now you're saying he's not going to include it, you're getting confused.
Well, depending on what the recommendation is.
Well, the recommendation's in the draft is to have it put in.
Row, yeah.
Across the front of the house too?
Yeah.
I I guess I thought it was just.
Yeah, so.
Properties, but.
So in in discussing the um, the incentives and the amenity package with staff. We agreed uh to construct as part of the project, all onsite sidewalks required by code. Um, we also, as Ryan alluded to, are providing um a cash. Uh. A a sum of cash for offsite sidewalks. So our position is. The the sidewalk along Morley property is an offsite sidewalk. We don't have that property under land control. What Ryan was offering as a compromise was we would build the sidewalk at our expense across the Morley frontage. Um, if the recommendation of the board tonight was to not require the sidewalk along roadway B until such time. As the uh, the commercial or industrial pads are developed. Uh, it it sounded like that wasn't palatable, so our position would be that the the frontage. The sidewalk across the Morley frontage would be covered by the cash. Um, that we would be providing to the town as part of the sidewalk package versus having that be at expense to develop. Because it's an offsite sidewalk.
So you were saying, okay, so then I was computing, so you're saying. There's no sidewalk down B right now, which I see is correct?
Correct.
And that's, you want to do that when one of the LIs is sold or developed? But you were gonna do the sidewalk up on ninety six in front of all of that, correct?
That would be our compromise, um, to a temporary compromise until the LI portion along. Road B would be developed. At that point, we can consider a condition of approval and see if we'll see if we'll for that. That's what you do.
So if you don't build sidewalk on B, then it would go in front of the house that you don't own? You're still gonna try to figure that out or you, no?
They're going right away at that point. They they would.
Sidewalk in the right of way, yeah, that that would be the proposal.
Why, as we're sending it to the town board is what has already been written. Um, is what you were just talking about, and that's the way we're we're gonna be keeping it for them to look at.
Okay.
And they can make their adjustments on, I think, you know, because that that's a. And part, part of that's required and then again, if they wash up the that that other parcel, it's a cash donation. We'll have them make that final determination, really, as. Our recommendation, we'd like to see it all, but it's just our recommendation to the town board.
Yeah, I guess if they want to adjust.
If they want to adjust it, yeah, we can, you know.
Take out whatever they feel is necessary.
Yep. Okay. Alright.
So are we back to everybody's back on one page or?
We are.
Yes. So I I just want to allude to one thing that you brought up, Doug. I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna talk about anything for this project, but you guys talked about proportionate accessory structures for this project. I just want to bring to your attention that within the past year, the town board. Removed those restrictions from a big portion of the original Auburn Meadows. Making all those patio lots able to have sheds, pools, decks. Such like that. Right. So I I don't disagree with you. I just want you to understand the town, the town board may not be very. Willing to put all that back into. Um.
Well, I think that's, you know, ultimately up to them. I I, again, my my concern is just that someone could build a three hundred square foot, you know.
Right.
Accessory use structure in the back of a eleven thousand square foot lot, I mean, you know, three hundred, it's. It's not that big, but I mean, it could be uh.
Some of the lots over in Auburn Meadows.
Yeah.
That what what you're alluding to is they couldn't put anything there.
Previously, no, there was a restriction, they couldn't have any.
On the patio lot.
Uh, patio lot, so they couldn't put anything, so it wasn't proportional. It was nothing.
So my my concern is if we go proportional, that we we just rewrote the code to allow a three hundred square foot shed. And then essentially we'd be having to rewrite it again. With that, this specific zoning district to, it would no longer, it wouldn't be allowed in this. All this project only.
That that's.
Which is fine. I'm ju- I'm just trying to, I want to make sure that.
And they and they could decide that I'm completely crazy about that too, which is, I mean, that that's their 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 choice. I just, you know, wanted to try to. Kind of contain some of those, I mean, these smaller lots, I just get concerned because when you have like. You know, accessory structure back there plus, you know, a driveway that gets built with, you know. A boat or RV parked off on the side. I mean, now you're. You're now changing, I mean, to some degree, you can end up changing the previous coverage of that area that that then impacts or could impact stormwater, so.
Right, and you lose green space, which.
Exactly.
As well, I hundred percent agree with you.
Yeah, a- and I'm just afraid that down the road, if we don't have some type of restriction on it, that. It it just gives you guys something else that you can, you know. Use for determining whether or not that's, you know, viable or not. And again, I don't, I mean, Tom Ward can decide that 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 comment isn't. It's just our recommendation, but I I I think it's it's something that should be considered by them is. You know, how how they go about it, I guess it doesn't, that's just our recommendation, whether or not it's proportionate. They they could just say, you know, no, we we feel three hundred is a good size, but. I I would like to have that in there as proportional and then they can, they can do what they choose, so. You can ignore it. I mean, that's, again, this is our recommendation, but they don't have to follow it. It's just a recommendation, so.
Yes, make your comments at the town board too.
Yeah.
Yeah, then that's the, I, it's the.
I appreciate the.
I don't disagree with you at all. I just, I want to make sure that. We all know, because sometimes things get missed, so I would hate to. That comment be made and then all of a sudden we didn't realize that that just occurred with the headaches that. Were involved with that, so that that was all that comment was.
Well, and and I would understand now, you know, I I don't want to say outright no, because I don't think that or or. Well, and and I would understand, you know, I I don't wanna say outright no, because I don't think that or or.
Right.
Rules or stuff like that. I don't think that's the one, that's not fair to the homeowners. But I think proportional to the size of the lot, I mean, because some of those lots are fine, you know, they're full size.
Right.
It looks like, at least on this conceptual plan, they're they're full size, so there would be no restriction on that.
Yep.
You know, but their neighbor that has a smaller sized lot, it might be a little more restrictive, but it's due to the size of their lot, so. And again, that's town board's decision whether or not they want to entertain that or not, so. Alright, with that. Um, I I I think we're ready to move forward with our our recommendations.
With with that one change.
With that one change.
Okay.
Um, you know.
It's gonna be rewritten. Draft.
That one, that one sentence.
Essentially.
Yeah. Well, I'll make sure Doug is agreeing with one of you.
Yeah.
Well, I can give you a paper copy if you want it, yeah.
I have the wording.
I mean.
Wording.
This, it's number three.
And Doug's. Well, it might need to be. I don't know, we we can, we can, we can adjust that.
Okay.
Again, I think the intent is there and whether again, it's a recommendation to town board, so. Um, alright, with with that, I mean, you guys have seen the the resolution, um.
Report and recommend.
Report and recommendation, yeah, yeah.
They made their comments and.
Comments, yes. Um, so the this point, um. I'm motion to waive that, the reading of all the the verbiage in that, and it is posted on the website if you guys wanna read it. Um, there's like, I don't know, fifteen pages maybe, so I don't wanna keep you here any longer than what we already have, so. Uh, I've been motioned with the reading. So moved.
I'll second.
Uh, okay.
Aaron Sweeney.
Hi.
Adrian Bellas.
Hi.
Tim DeLucia.
Hi.
Doug Bees.
Hi. So now goes to the town board, um and then again, they'll post either Friday or or Monday, whether or not they'll they'll hear that the next hearing, so. Um, you know, just keep an eye on that, and again, I would. And that meeting and what's the same concerns, obviously, they'll hear our minutes from tonight. Um, it is. Oh, that's right, yeah, we have.
Probably extend it.
Alright.
Really.
Okay, um. That's it for for that one, um. Next item up is, um.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, report to the town. Operations.
Yeah, you've got a a draft report, but I'm not asking you to take any action on tonight, just introduce it. Uh, comprehensive plan, when it was adopted, provides for the town operations committee with assistance. From the planning board. To prepare a report that identifies the actions that were to be implemented during this year. And those to be implemented beginning next year. This draft report does that, goes into detail uh on all of the potential actions. Uh, I'd like you to look at it and either at your next meeting, if there is a next meeting. Or at your first meeting in December, be prepared to uh. Either say there's changes, here are things that needed to be changed or except that is drafted.
Okay.
It's all that.
So it's just introducing it, process review, prepare to act either next meeting or following?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
The next one is the, at the town board meeting last night, I have a presentation, hardwoods and floor. On an individual wanting to have chickens. In uh the uh estates of Beaver Creek. Where they're next to Auburn Mo. And uh. Got Dan Ford reading that presentation. Town board, uh. Like you at some point in time to consider, you know, making a recommendation to them. On how to proceed with this request. And um, I would be preparing for your 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 uh draft, which. If you recall in the PowerPoint presentation, it was made the video or whatever you wanna call it. Um, and it it talks about other municipalities having regulations for chickens. I've done some research on those other municipalities, including ours. And in order for you to to make an informed decision, I think you need to have. Uh, the results of that, so I'll get that out to you tomorrow.
Okay.
And you could look at that.
Yeah, I I mean, that was gonna be one of the questions I had is, how are these regular like Perringtons, you know, is it one that they mentioned? Or I mean, I thought that was really well written. To allow it and and address a lot of the concerns that would have, but how's it been working, I guess, you know? For for the town Perrington and and hopefully, you know, how many, I guess, if we could reach out to them and see if it has been working well, is there? Been a lot of complaints, maybe, um from from neighbors, we can find out how, you know, some of that is gone in some of these other towns. I'd be interested to see. I mean, cause it's it's written well, I think, you know, from what I, but. The the actual, you know.
Uh, the big question becomes. Um. Is this, is this something that needs to be put into the zoning law? Or is this something that needs to be dealt with? Um, under one of the other chapters that we have in the court already. So that it's clear that it relates to animals. We've got a chapter. Being about fifty-seven. Uh, that talks about animals. That's the title of the chapter. But the whole chapter is on dogs. Okay, so maybe it fits in that chapter. How chickens are gonna be dealt with. Uh, it's really that kind of an issue because the the only structure you're talking about is the chicken. And and you know, that's what you regulate, you don't regulate people, you don't regulate that. And the thing in a zoning law, tradition. A lot of municipalities have misinterpreted.
So do you need anything else from us? I mean, any.
No.
I mean, from.
No, I'm just. This the. They had, they asked that you weigh in on it. Um, I anticipated that you'd weigh in on something, you had to have some.
Some other question, yeah, yeah, yeah.
What 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 do these other codes look like?
Yeah.
What do they do?
I mean, I guess if there's any other questions that you guys might have, uh, you know, on the ground, we need to pursue or you get back to us before we make it to the the recommendation, I guess, we can. We can throw that out.
I'll give you, I'll give you a draft uh to to look at.
And then.
What I found.
Okay.
And and uh.
Have a bigger discussion about it once we see what you.
On your, on your next meeting, we'll look at it.
Now, our our restriction is five acre lots or bigger, it's allowed, correct?
That's for for uh, you know, non-domestic animals.
Right. Um. Does Parenton have a lot size restriction? I didn't mind that.
I didn't mind it either.
Okay.
I didn't plan a lot of that.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll wait for your your research, I guess, before we. Man, unless there's any other comments or questions.
Other, I got stuff, but I can wait.
Yeah, that's kind of same thing I was, I mean, I I definitely have some more questions, but I mean, it. At first, when I first saw it, I was like, that's crazy, but then, you know, then there's all the things that came up in that presentation a day ago, maybe.
I will say.
So maybe.
If you get a chance to, um. There's, I think it was Parenton that did the videos, they they tell you to watch the videos. It's interesting. I took some some notes off of that. I mean, you you gotta, you gotta sign up for the course.
Right.
There's no, there's, there's a no fee option, so you know, this certificate. You do learn some stuff. I wouldn't say it's harmful. To have that, let's just take a look at it. Yeah, yeah. It's it's not in depth by any means, but it gives you an idea of what a chicken does, what it sees, how it thinks.
Yeah, things I never thought of, so. How a chicken thinks, okay. Or maybe I'll watch one of those.
So.
What was in those, but.
How's that chicken thinking when it grows over there?
So Ron, you're gonna look at all these that are listed, Canadago, Manchester.
I have, yes. Eastfield Field. I do even Thornton Village, Scottsville and Farm.
Okay.
Right.
Alright.
That's easy, I guess we don't need a, nothing we need to act on, really, so, okay. Um, so the next item up is open discussion, uh, on. Over tonight?
Uh, the only thing I I have to go over tonight is we're um. Finalizing easement documents for this sidewalk grant. That we uh were awarded. And then the other thing is that with the water tower project down there on Brick Yard Road. And uh. Your keys. Um, we now got a retool and prepare another bid document to go back out to bid. Uh, see what the bids will be and. We need to find out if we can uh ask for an extension to the grant because of. When it was originally issued, it was a period of time that ends at the end of twenty twenty-four. And given today's. Uh, environment on being able to get steel delivery and all this other good stuff. You don't know whether you can get it within two weeks or six months or a year. Some of these town trucks are two years out now. You can't get the same truck in the same year.
Controls for the water tank, too, is an issue. I've done, seen that on another project, I'm.
Oh, yeah.
At work and that that the billion gallon water tank is ready to go and it's supposed to be operational in August, and they're hoping by December they'll have the controls to the pumps, so. Definitely something to consider that some of those more specialized control units are were even longer lead time than steel and any of the other stuff.
So a lot of that is in your description there that I gave you to. You know, or. Town ops.
Yep, yep. Anything else?
No.
Are you, anything code?
Nothing from us.
Okay.
Um. As I understand it. When Sarah, she doesn't have any applications that are scheduled for a meeting next time. And. You can either. You know, check with her and and Ed to see if you wanna cancel it. If you do, we we have posted notice. That that regular scheduled meeting is being canceled.
Okay. I'll give that a call.
The real, when's the time, is in the timeline Friday or next week? The cutoff, or is it already cut?
Uh, I have to look, I don't remember.
Like Friday or.
Might be Friday, actually, right, Adrian, for applicant submission, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there's still a few.
A few more days. Well, I'll.
I mean, I would probably just add, obviously adds back.
Yeah.
Tonight or tomorrow, but.
Yeah.
If there's nothing, then.
Yeah, I don't see any need to. Sit and see, hi, you guys, if there's nothing else.
Yeah.
Cancellation notice has to go out, how much in advance?
Well, as soon as you, as you know, it's gonna be, yes.
Okay.
It's not a five day or ten day.
Okay.
Thing, okay.
I'll check with that and.
I get doggy control, Sarah and hash it out more.
Yeah, I, yeah, as Ron said, there is nothing, as of right now, on you guys' schedule. I know Ed's stopping into the office tomorrow at some point.
Okay.
Just though, I mean.
Yeah, I'll check with him.
Yes, I'm okay with, there's nothing to cancel, I mean.
Me, too. Yeah.
The World Series may still be going on.
Or rain delays, maybe. Yeah. Okay. Um, alright, I guess at this point, um, public comments, any other comments from public? Oh, appreciate your comment. You know, it's nice to have some company in here, so. A lot of times, we got uh this wonder.
And if it, if it goes farther, we'll, we'll make sure we keep an eye on it and.
Yeah.
You can come back and remind us in a couple of months, though, too, that, but we always are concerned about runoff of any farm field. That gets developed, I mean. We had the same problem and. What's the one in the corner right now? Now, over here off of forty-one.
Oh, Hathaways?
Hathaways, there was a lot of residents in the older neighborhoods that are concerned about the creek that ran through there and. Actually, those bigger retention ponds have helped. Control the water a little slower and dispense it slower into the creek, not have the higher rain. Runoff, so it works, it works. I'm not saying it's perfect everywhere, but, so we we take it into big consideration.
Yeah, I think we're just looking to see when, when machines, if this will, when machines are in our backyards.
Next year, realistically, probably, if it, if he keeps going the way he can go, if if everything, if there's no setbacks, major setbacks. I mean.
Larry told me.
Larry, how they can do.
And but how, where, what did we miss? Is it just because we've been come to?
No, like. Well, I would have thought, doesn't the letter go out to all the close. Residents of a project?
That.
But I don't know how.
What? Rezoning, um, it'll go, actually, there'll be a sign posted on the property when they start to develop.
Yeah.
It'll be on ninety-six and Colette.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, with the.
And the reason it isn't posted now is because there's been no decision made. Downboard, whether they're gonna consider the rezoning or not.
Yeah, so they.
That's what I told you.
Yeah, well, and 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 once it's a formal application, you'd also should get a letter in the mail, because I believe it's it's a requirement that, you know, within so many hundred feet, I believe it is.
Properties adjacent to rezoning.
Properties definitely that are adjacent to it, but then I think.
But then, at that point, some people will say, well. See, you already made, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, no, but I mean, so tonight was a good night to come in and give them, but I mean, that's it's stuff, and also the next.
Probably the biggest thing would just keep watching the website.
That's, yeah.
Town website, I mean, it's cause there's. Land or after, I still.
Make sure you have Larry's phone number.
Larry comes to a lot of meetings, or at least the town board meetings.
Alright, uh, board members, any, anything else? Sorry, and then, and I've got nothing, so. That's with that, I'm motioned adjourned by, by Tim, by uh Adrian.
Yep.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Hi.
So have a good night.
Yeah, good night, we'll uh sleep up at the next meeting. We have it, it'll be on the sixth.